Well, good afternoon, and thank you for everyone for participating in our democracy by being part of today's candidate forum. I'm Joe O'Hair, and I'm the CEO of Whistle Stop, so welcome to Whistle Stop. This is our Jackson Cafe. If you've not been here before, if it's your first time, welcome. If you've been here before, thank you for coming back. And I'm a member of the Aging Action Initiative's Advocacy Alliance. The Aging Action Initiative is a collaborative of over 250 public agencies, nonprofits, and healthcare providers working for the well-being of older people in Marin. The purpose of AAI is to promote a county-wide, age-friendly environment, especially for those in need, collectively created by a strong network of service providers through education, policy advocacy, and service innovation. The candidates here this afternoon are running for the Mill Valley City Council and the Ross Town Council. People over the age of 60 make up 38% of the registered voters in Ross and 40% of registered voters in Mill Valley. Today's event is being moderated by the League of Women Voters of Marin County. This year, the League of Women Voters will celebrate 100 years of following a mission to empower voters and defend democracy. Hosting and moderating candidate forums is an important part of their vision of a democracy where every citizen has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. The League of Women Voters is strictly nonpartisan organization and never supports or opposes individual candidates or political parties. As a matter of courtesy, please turn off all electronic devices. Unauthorized videos are not allowed because the FCC requires that a forum must not be edited and must be broadcast in its entirety, either live or reasonably soon after it takes place. The League wants to ensure that information is not manipulated to create false or misleading impressions. Candidates have agreed not to use or edit the recording or the forum for campaign purposes. We encourage our audience to submit questions related to aging issues in our community by writing them onto the index cards. Members of the AAI Advocacy Alliance are here to collect your cards. Simply raise your hand, and someone will collect and deliver them to the moderator. I will now introduce the forum moderator from the League of Women Voters, Nancy Bell. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Thank you for being here this afternoon for the Mill Valley City Council and Ross Town Council Candidate Forum, co-sponsored by the Aging Action Initiative and the League of Women Voters of Marin County. I'm Nancy Bell of the League of Women Voters, and I will be your moderator. With me are League members Lynn Dooley as timekeeper and Lisa Bennett and Wanda Sarti as question sorters. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. In addition to promoting voter education, the League participates in advocacy for issues and may take positions on issues that arise in ballot measures. In order to ensure impartiality, it is the League's policy that candidate forum team members not live in the voting jurisdiction the candidates represent, nor can they be actively involved in a candidate's campaign. I would like to briefly explain the roles of the timekeeper and the question sorters. To assure everyone stays within the allotted time, our timekeeper will hold up easy-to-read cards fully in the candidate's view, signaling their remaining time, such as 30 seconds. When time is up, she will hold up a stop sign, at which point the candidate should complete their sentence. Please note that the question sorters do not censor questions, but rather they screen the questions to avoid duplication and anything inappropriate. If you do not recognize your question, it might have been combined with other questions on the same topic. CMCMTV is recording this afternoon's forum. A gavel-to-gavel production will be rebroadcast on CMCN's Channel 30, as well as on the League's website at www.marinlwv.org. Audience release notices are posted around the room advising that your presence as a member of the audience during the filming constitutes your permission for the League of Women Voters of Marin County to use your likeness on the air in any form, and as often as they deem appropriate and desirable for promotional or broadcast purposes. Today's event is a bit different in that we have candidates representing two Marin city-town councils, Mill Valley and Ross. There are three seats open for each race. As Joe mentioned, the Aging Action Initiative was launched in 2014 as a cross-sector collaborative of more than over 250 community agencies, service providers, and grassroots organizations. With nine of Marin's 11 cities participating, including Mill Valley and Ross, issues around seeking an age-friendly, livable community pertain to everyone represented here today. Therefore, the questions presented today focus on age-friendly solutions to key issues. Today's candidates are for Mill Valley City Council: Sashi MacIntyre, Urban Carmel, Max Perre, and there are two additional candidates who are not joining us today, Tricia Ossa and Kirk Nowor. For the Ross Town Council, we have Charles Kirchner, and we're going to call him Bill, Bill Kirchner, Sina Shiko, and Beach Kuhl. Two additional candidates are also running for the Ross Town Council who are not joining us today, Elizabeth Brekis and Mary McFadden. Before we get started, a quick review of some ground rules. If you haven't done so already, please take a minute to silence your cellphones and any other noise-making devices. Because we are a strictly nonpartisan organization and follow Federal Election Commission rules for candidate forums, no campaign material, including buttons, signs, brochures, t-shirts, et cetera, is permitted inside the forum room in order to maintain neutrality. I'd like to remind everyone that the candidates and Aging Action Initiative have all agreed to participate under the League guidelines set for this forum. Each candidate has been invited to make a two-minute opening statement. After that, the candidates will each have one and a half minutes to answer each question. To be fair, I will rotate the order in which they respond to the questions. For opening statements, we will begin with Sashi and go down the row in the order in which they are seated. So, Sashi, you have two minutes.
Thank you, Nancy. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Whistle Stop.
Oh, so sorry. Thank you. Should know that by now. Thanks, Michael. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Whistle Stop and the Aging Action Initiative for bringing us here to talk about this important series of topics. We are entering an era which, for the first time, we will have five generations alive at the same time. This is a very different world that we need to plan for as far as cities go. California can look to Florida for kind of the future of that. From an infrastructure perspective, we have to think about door handles, accessibility, roads. There are lots of little details that need to be considered when we consider the aging population, and as was mentioned before, Mill Valley is 40% seniors. Disaster preparedness and safety. A big issue for me is our neighborhood response groups and neighbors helping neighbors. Getting, making sure that our neighborhoods are more connected is a way to ensure a connected community is a resilient community. Housing, I'm sure we're going to be talking about that, people aging in place, considering lifecycle housing, multi-generational housing, different forms of housing, and also recreation, making sure that there are recreational activities that meet the needs of seniors. So, I think this is an important category of topics that we're here to talk about, and I'm really happy that you've brought us here today. So, thank you very much.
I'm Urban Carmel, and I'm also a resident in Mill Valley. So, thank you very much for having us here. So, aging is a topic near and dear to my heart. I think I'm the oldest person, at least in the Mill Valley group, that's running for office. So, not that I'm very old, but I happen to be the oldest. My grandfather was born in 1891 and lived 98 years. My parents are both 95, so I've been dealing with aging for several years. I did not realize my parents were going to live quite this long, and they are aging in place. They are aging in their home, and their home is in Connecticut. So, this is a really challenging situation. We've had to deal with a lot of issues, my brother and sister and I, and we've learned a lot. We've learned a lot, at least I always say, about what we would not do, because my parents, I feel, have made almost every single mistake they could possibly make in their aging, except for the fact, as my dad would say, "Hey, I'm 95 years old. I haven't made that many mistakes. I've lived this long." And tell him about his food, and he goes, "Hey, it's pretty good. You tried living 95 years." So, this is a really interesting topic. I feel like I've learned a lot through them. I feel like this is something that we need to implement well in Mill Valley because we are an aging population. We are a third over the age of 60 already, and it's only going to increase. My sort of entry point into the city council is through the Planning Commission. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission of Mill Valley, so I deal with housing issues, and we're trying to find ways of addressing everyone's housing issues, especially affordability issues, and dealing with seniors who live alone a lot of times, and deal with not only income issues, but also loneliness issues. So, we can combat a lot of these things simultaneously by finding creative housing solutions. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you to the League and for Whistle Stop for having us today. My name's Max Perre. I grew up in Mill Valley. My grandparents moved to Mill Valley in 1960, and I was raised by my grandmother and my mom. My grandma passed away in 2011. To me, senior issues are critical. I think that with our aging population, we're going to have to do things a little bit differently. Our bus routes, our transit systems, how we plan around infrastructure, how we do sidewalk repairs, all of these key things that go into a community's built environment are going to have to be reconsidered if the town's population is increasingly older and getting older by the day. My issues in this campaign are focused around environmental preservation, are focused on emergency preparedness, on how we evacuate and how we evacuate safely, and lastly, how we create a vibrant business environment so that our downtown and our commercial corridors have the businesses that residents want to see, that are vibrant, and that can exist and thrive in the era of Amazon, regional malls, and big-box stores. So, those are the key issues that I'm running on, and I look forward to answering the questions. Thanks.
Bill, I'm not sure my microphone's working. Can you hear me now? Okay. Bill Kircher, running for a seat on the Ross Town Council. You see, it says my name is Charles Kircher. It's Charles William Kircher. I go by my middle name. Sorry for the confusion, but it's been a lifelong thing. Speaking of which, one of my main qualifications is dealing with issues for people over 60. I am over 60, and that's a condition I've had for almost 13 years. In other words, I'm 73. Now, I haven't seen the whole thing, although I've had my parents and aging relatives who have. And so, I'm somewhat familiar with what happens as you get older, but I'm trying, I'm also part of the baby boom generation that never wants to accept what came before, even though probably we should just do it. But one of the things we haven't accepted is that when you get older, you have to stop being active. You have to quit doing sports and so forth. And I have not done that. I've continued to be active, and I have continued to compete in athletic events and do other things, and I want to encourage older people to continue to be active. You can do a lot more than you think, is what I tell people, and I've given some talks on this. I know some people have mobility issues and other issues that compromise what they can do, but I think a lifetime of activity is one of the best things you can do for your health, but also to stay active and to stay engaged. I mean, one of the reasons I do these things is the social part. I like to ride bicycles with other people and attend athletic events with other people. The other thing that I'm making a big push on in terms of my campaign is emergency preparedness, and I'll probably come back to that later, but I think that there is a very big role here in protection of seniors and helping people who may be faced with an emergency and who need assistance in dealing with that. Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Sina Shakuh. I want to thank Whistle Stop and AAI for hosting us today. I read an interesting stat that the older adults outnumber the children and youth in Marin by roughly 7,000, and it's continuing to grow. And as a parent who has two small, young children, my first focus has always been my children, but now with two aging adults, as in my parents and my wife's parents, you know, I feel like my hands are more full than they've ever been. Just, it's kind of life's cruel joke. As soon as you finish raising your children, you have to now take care of your parents, and then you have to take care of yourself. So, I've got a background. I'm an entrepreneur. I've designed products for Salesforce.com. I've designed products that are real estate software products, and I've gotten successful at this, taken a company public by merging with one of our competitors. And one thing I've learned is that you've got to know your user base, right? And a town is no different than a software product. You have to design around the needs of the community. And, you know, what I've found is that our older adults are really what make our community what it is today. We're building on the foundations of what they've done before us, and it's our responsibility, really, to give back and build an age-friendly community that lets them enjoy it with dignity and grace and independence. I'm really focused to help with community resources, financial planning, home planning, and design considerations inside of Ross to help in many different facets, and I'm sure we're going to get into all this in very tactile details. I'll get into it as we take questions.
My name's Beach Kuhl, and I'm running for reelection to the Town Council in Ross because I think Ross is about to enter a critical period where experience will be vital to making decisions about, that are going to affect Ross's future for a long time to come. Just to introduce myself a little bit, I, like Bill, and more than Bill, have been, am a member of the aged community. I'm 84 years old. I had an undergraduate degree in economics from Cornell. I have a law degree from Stanford. I practiced as a trial attorney in San Francisco for over 50 years, in addition to doing a lot of arbitration and some mediation, and even serving as a trial judge, as a volunteer trial judge. We moved, Janie and I moved to Ross in 1974. In 2011, I was appointed to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury, and I learned about how municipal government works and sometimes doesn't work. In 2012, I ran as a write-in candidate and won election to the Town Council. The major issues that I think concern the whole town are wildfire, which we can discuss later, flood control, fire protection, that is to say, our firehouse is wearing out, and we're going to have to do something, and it's going to be a tough decision what we do, and utility undergrounding, which is an issue which is beginning to draw some interest in Ross. I'm on the, I represent Ross on the Transportation Authority of Marin, and I'm on its executive committee and also a committee about electric vehicles and all of the fuels. I'm on the Ross Valley Fire Department Board, and I have served on the town's community safety and general government committees. So, I think I have the experience to do the job on the Town Council.
Thank you. We asked the candidates who couldn't be with us today if they would like to submit an opening statement that we could read for them. Mary McFadden, who's running for Ross Town Council, has asked me to read her opening statement. Dear neighbor, my name is Mary McFadden, and I am a candidate for Ross Town Council in the upcoming March 3 election. As a resident for almost 10 years, I educated our three children at Ross School, co-founded a successful Ross-based real estate firm, enjoy volunteering in our community, and have had the good fortune to see many neighbors become lifelong friends. These connections create respect for the traditions that make Ross a special place and confidence that our community can and will continue to improve. However, my preparation for public service started much earlier. As the daughter of first-generation Cuban-American parents, I learned early in life the importance of education and community. As a scholarship college athlete, I experienced the power of teamwork to achieve ambitious goals. As a magna cum laude political science major, I celebrate the principle that government is formed to serve the interests of the individual. Finally, as an entrepreneur, I have experienced firsthand the importance of risk-taking and hard work when building something important. Taken together, I believe I have the experience, work ethic, and judgment to address the critical questions expected to face the council over the next four years, including fire and public safety, emergency preparedness, flood prevention, ensuring a responsive building code, the proposed Branson School expansion, and Ross's long-term fiscal management. On each issue, you have my commitment that I will welcome your input and cast votes that reflect our community's collective best interests. Thank you in advance for your support, Mary McFadden. So, now it's time for the question portion of our forum, and we have some prepared questions by Aging Action Initiative that we're going to start off with, and we will start with Urban for the first question, which is, "In recent survey, in a recent survey of older adults in Marin, climate change and emergency preparedness were listed as a primary concern. What do you plan to do to help older residents be ready?"
Yeah, thank you. So, it's a concern for everybody. It's not just a concern for seniors. It's the number-one issue that comes up, and it's been an ongoing issue in Mill Valley going back 30, 40 years. So, getting people ready for emergencies and getting them prepared to deal with it. So, the main issues when it comes to emergency preparedness, when it comes to seniors, is being able to evacuate to a safe spot. And I know this because I've got elderly neighbors. I've got two 80-year-olds that live across the street from us, and we live in a wooded area. We live in a canyon, and we need to be able to get out. And it's one thing for my wife and I to be able to get out, and for our neighbors to be able to get out, and we can do so on foot because what the evidence shows is that getting people out on foot is the way that they get to safety. But we're wondering how we're going to get our elderly neighbors out, and this is a big issue for them. So, we can't drive them out, so we're, you know, trying to understand how we can do that, maybe through wheelchairs or through a cart to get them out to safety, keeping them well-prepared so that they have a bag that they can take with them, so that they are prepared when they go to an area for evacuation and to recover from the disaster that takes place, and providing information so that they know what to expect and so they're not surprised by this. And one of the things that we have implemented in Mill Valley is a really excellent alert system so that people know that there's an emergency and that the need for evacuation is now upon us and that they can act. Thank you.
Max, go ahead.
Yeah. Like I said, these are the two most important issues that I'm running on. First, on climate, I think that it's critical that we do everything in our power as a small city to address climate change and the environment locally. That's both on the mitigation side in terms of installing new EV charging stations downtown and on Miller Avenue, as well as addressing the adaptation side, right? So, preparing for sea level rise and working to prepare for wildfire, which is the inevitable. I think in terms of emergency evacuation planning, we are now on the right approach, which is to get people to safety. It's not necessarily, as Urban alluded to, getting folks to the freeway in a car. For different populations, it's going to be a different approach, but getting people to a safe refuge, wait it out, and then get them outside of the immediate fire zone is the priority. So, I think that's the right approach, and that's the approach we're currently taking. We also need to ensure that our firefighting capabilities are at the foremost, that our staffing levels are up to the standard, that our equipment is up to the standard, and that our neighborhood response groups are in every single neighborhood so that people know their neighbors and know when to help when the evacuation order comes in.
Thank you. Bill?
I agree with the comments that have been made. Let me just focus on one particular aspect of this, which I've been very much a promoter of and engaged with trying to help move it forward, and that is organizing neighborhoods, sometimes referred to as the neighborhood block captain system, where you have one or more people in a neighborhood who have volunteered to take the lead in organizing the neighborhood. And one of the important aspects of that is to take an inventory of everybody in your neighborhood in terms of what their needs might be in an emergency. Are there older residents, people with disabilities or other mobility issues, and of course, children, pets, and so forth, so that if an emergency happens or occurs, the block captain or whoever's helping the block captain can check on people and assist them, and if necessary, go door-to-door to do this. Another big aspect of this is communications, of course. In Marin, and in Ross, the system is underway to actually use handheld radios to be able to communicate if our cellphones don't work, which they didn't in the last power outage. Of course, communications are very important. There's a big push to try to bolster that system, but as I've said before, we need a backup of a backup, and these radios seem to be a step in the right direction. So, this has been the main focus of my efforts. Thanks.
So, RossNet is an effort that is being put together with the walkie-talkies around town. There's a pilot going live this month, actually, to do exactly that, which is get neighborhood efforts. It's a volunteer force to do so, but I think making sure that we have access to homes, and one of the things that obviously we all need to know is just having emergency preparation kits, really important. And then also, there's a big issue in Ross right now about keeping our fire department. I think it's critical to keep our fire department for our safety because it's not something that I think we can live without having the local presence and having our JPA kind of accommodate for Ross without having our own help, but also working closely with Branson and their administration to use Branson as a refuge area, staging relief to get people to safety, and having emergency preparedness kits over there as well. So, it's, there's a psychological element that also comes with this for our aging population, helping them understand that they're not alone and that there's people that are there to help them, and this is something we learned through the PSP events that happened just recently.
I don't know that there's much new that I can add with respect to Ross. I am very much a supporter of the neighborhood organizations, and as Sina mentioned, we now have in place essentially our first organization on Woodhaven Avenue, which is a little area way up towards Mount Baldy, which raises one of the issues that we're going to have to be concerned about is growth of grass in the Marin Municipal Water District areas. But going back to the subject itself, frankly, I think Ross has two problems that are going to be difficult to overcome with respect to response to disasters. One of them is, well, and also to even to making our neighborhood groups function well. One of them is there are so many gated homes in Ross, and you have to be sure that in an emergency, people can get through, somehow get through the gates to get to people, because it certainly is true that one of the things we have to do is try and get our older people to plan for what's going to happen and also to get to them to help them evacuate if that becomes necessary.
So, you've given us two very rich topics to cover in 90 seconds, so I'm going to do the best I can. And they're related because from a climate perspective, a fire is a catastrophic release of carbon dioxide, so that's something we want to prevent. I have been doing some work with Mill Valley Villages on what we can do to help with their membership in helping with people get an emergency plan together, get a go-bag together, make sure that they know what the items are that they would need to grab in an emergency. Again, I mentioned the neighborhood response groups, so I won't go into more detail about that, but that is, making sure the neighborhoods are connected is a really important piece of this puzzle. We've done a lot on the jurisdictional side. The neighborhood side is the next area to strengthen. Vegetation management, there are a number of people in our community who are perhaps house-rich and cash-poor, and clearing the vegetation is going to be a challenge for them, but it's something we have to do, and there may or may not be funds available to help with that. So, this is again where the neighborhoods are helpful, where people can band together. They can, you know, we can bring our chipper out there, which saves a lot of money, and people can band together and become a firewise community to help with some of that effort. Evacuation was touched on by a number of people. Again, that's a neighborhood, something that the neighborhoods can help with. And then I just wanted to briefly mention that we did invest half a million dollars in LRAD sirens, which are long-range acoustical device sirens that can be, that deliver a voice message and be activated by satellite phone even when the power is out.
Thank you. Question number two, we're Question number two, we’re going to begin with you, Max. How will you ensure that the input of older adults is sought and included in your city or town’s planning process and in your policies, procedures, and programs?
Yeah, I think being proactive has really been a theme of my campaign, getting out into the community, hearing what residents and business owners have on their mind, right? And I think that we do this in a couple of different ways as a city already, and I think there’s areas we can improve. One way we do really well at the moment is we have a very robust newsletter that goes out via email. We’ve also started posting on Nextdoor and other social media sites, and I think that the next step in this is really engaging people where they are and having, we’ve had a council that’s prioritized coffee on the plaza in the downtown area, and I think the next step is to get out into other places in town, right? Go out towards the freeway, go to the Redwoods retirement community, go to neighborhoods, right, and have coffees, not just during election season, but throughout the year, so that we hear people’s concerns, we welcome them to the council chambers if they’re able to make the meetings, but we welcome their input even if they cannot.
One of the side benefits of the neighborhood organization program I spoke about earlier is that in the process of organizing neighborhoods, you get to know your neighbors, and you get to know people in the community, and not only hear about their situation in terms of emergency preparedness, but other things that they may be concerned about or may need. So I think that’s one of the side benefits of really focusing on this kind of an effort with respect to emergency preparedness. Going back to another thing I mentioned in my opening about fitness and activities, I think that there is a real possibility for the town, through its recreation department, to reach out to seniors and organize activities to encourage them to do what they can in terms of exercise, getting outside, and engaging activities. I’ve found that it’s not only very healthy and very good for you, but it’s a social thing, too, and I think that would be helpful indeed.
So I think it’s incredibly important to make sure that our aging community knows that they have a voice. I think what I’ve witnessed is that they feel like they need to maybe take a backseat to other issues, but they’re just as important, and just judging from the numbers, we’re all going to be here soon, within the next fifteen years, so it’s important to create a vehicle for everyone to be heard. I think also, having sat through some town council meetings, they’re exhaustive and very long, so I think it’s very good to simplify this communication and get it out, and doing that in places like socials and other areas where someone can get the soundbites and know that their voices can be heard. But also, I think you have to be proactive. You’ve got to know your customer. We’re all here to serve you guys. So running polls and being very proactive to bring the issues to them and ask them for their feedback, and publishing that and sharing that in our town council meetings, because these are folks who can’t often make it to those meetings and may have issues and may want to be represented by others, so I think it’s extremely important to represent them in our forums.
One of the things that has disappointed me ever since I got on the town council in 2012 has been the lack of participation. I expected that I was going to have phone calls at dinnertime and people sending me emails and letters and stuff. It hasn’t turned out that way, and I think we have to do a better job in trying to get all of our citizens involved in one way or another. I think particularly about the elderly, who probably have some difficulties in making it to our town meetings, for example, and I think we have to look for ways to reach out, to try and get more people involved in these issues. We already have a couple of major town events, which provide an opportunity for people to even to meet other people. We have a picnic on the Fourth of July that draws several hundred people, which is a big number for Ross. And we also have a town dinner in the fall, which again provides people the opportunity to meet and to talk about issues. We have a newsletter called The Morning After, which goes out the day after the morning after our council meeting each month, which is one way. But nonetheless, I’ve been a little disappointed, and I’d like to see us do things to get people, to get more people involved.
Well, I think maybe that’s because you’re doing such a good job, Pete Beach, because I think sometimes people don’t come if they’re generally happy. This is an area that I think we’re doing very well in. We have a community that’s not shy, and most of the people who come to participate are seniors, the people who are retired and who have the time. People have mentioned seniors who maybe are less mobile and less able to come. Some of those reside at the Redwoods, but even the Redwoods is an incredibly vibrant, active community, and we hear from them a lot. So I think we just keep doing what we’re doing. The community center is another gathering place that is a natural gathering place for people, that could be another avenue. We do often have special meetings there, community meetings. Seniors are represented on all the commissions, on subcommittees. On any particular issue, we often put together subcommittees, and there are always seniors involved in those committees. Wouldn’t it be a terrible idea to do an audit and just kind of get a sense for how we’re doing in that area? I think that’s not a bad idea, but I think we’ll find that we’re doing fairly well.
Yeah, I’ll echo those comments. I feel like we’re in a very high-touch community, that’s what I always say, and people email me a lot, especially elderly people email me a lot. So I feel like I’m pretty engaged already. I’ve got a long list of people that I’ve met during this process of campaigning, including nineteen former mayors, and many of those are elderly. In fact, probably almost all of them are elderly, and trust me, they are not shy about giving me their opinion, so I feel like I’m pretty well-connected with them. I think a couple of things that have gone really well, so hats off to the city council, who decided to hold a council meeting in the afternoon at the Redwoods. I thought that was just a fantastic idea, and it was all focused on senior issues, and it really brought it to the seniors themselves. I think having council meetings periodically that start a little bit earlier, that are focused on senior issues, that provide a forum for seniors to come and speak, I think it would be an excellent idea. I’ve been in Mill Valley really involved with our library. I’ve spent the last ten years as a volunteer at a library. I started a foundation for our library, so I’m really in touch with it, and of course, seniors use the library to a very high degree. It’s just another great way to connect with people and to talk to them. I go out on Friday afternoons and sing with the Redwoods at the corner of Camino Alto and Miller, and they’ll come up to me and tell me a lot of their issues and tell me what’s on their mind. So I feel like we’re doing a lot of that, and in addition, last idea is to have the councilperson on the square, something I saw Sashi doing this past weekend. It’s a great opportunity for people to come out and give their feedback, and you just look for all those opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, and we’re going to begin the third question with Bill. The California Health and Human Services Agency is creating a master plan for aging to promote an age-friendly California. In addition, both Ross and Mill Valley are completing their own age-friendly plans. What should be included in these plans, and if you are elected, how will you help implement them?
Well, Ross is working on its own age-friendly plan, and I think that one thing, and I hate to be a broken record on this, I would like to see included in the age-friendly plan is some attention to what kinds of activities could the town promote for our senior citizens that would be healthy activities, if possible, outdoor activities, or other activities that they might not otherwise be aware of or might not otherwise be available to them. And again, following up on what I said earlier, I would like to have a specific part of the plan be a type of outreach for emergency situations, to plan as much and incorporate that into our plan, should it arise.
It’s a big topic. You could talk a long time. The aging, age-friendly city kind of blueprint is pretty self-explanatory. Housing, social participation, respect, and social inclusion, civic participation, employment, communication and information, community support and health services, outdoor spaces and buildings, transportation, those are all the elements, right? But to break it down and how I feel like they’re important is that I feel like we have to hit financial planning. Marin’s a really expensive place to grow old, and we need to provide better workshops for people to understand how to grow old in Marin and be able to afford it. Home planning, too, letting older adults age in their home, repurposing spare bedrooms and junior accessory units to be affordable housing, and that kind of serves double purpose, right? It gives someone that they can get to break that solitudeness that they have and also provide a housing solution for us. And then also, tons of design consideration, like extending the time it takes to cross a street, working on the sidewalks and general area. We’re actually in Ross about to revisit Ross Commons Plan, and I think it’s a perfect opportunity to hit this, and it would be something that’s top of my list.
A lot of what I want to say others have already said. We obviously want to create a plan that’s realistic and that provides all that we can provide for the elderly. One of the things I want to do is talk to Ross Recreation and see what ideas they have and what activities and classes perhaps we can come up with that will provide our elderly with things to occupy their time and to educate them. For example, one thing that I think I, as one who’s getting old, am aware of is that there are a lot of elderly people who don’t know how to get all the use out of their computer that they could, and I’d like to see us emphasize that. Not only does it provide communication between people, it provides communication in the event of an emergency. I think it’s a very vital thing that we, I want to talk to the head of our Ross Recreation Department about starting that sort of a class. Further than that, rather than taking up a lot of time, I’ll just say I agree with some of the ideas that the others have.
Mill Valley Villages has been a really big player in this area, particularly with the helping with computers and things like that. I think the more support we can give to Mill Valley Villages, the better. For an age-friendly master plan, I think we build on all the work that’s already been done in the county. There’s been a significant amount of thought put into age-friendly issues around the county, and I touched on some of these, housing, what can we do to help people stay in their homes, allowing people to rent, to turn part of their home into an ADU or a JADU and make it a rental, allowing people to do short-term rentals, so that they can use that as income to be able to stay in their homes. Thinking about lifecycle housing, thinking about how, you know, there are a lot of people in our community who are, their children and their families are moving back into their houses. So the way that we think about housing is really starting to change. As I mentioned, infrastructure is something that we need to, when we do planning for any infrastructure projects, we need to think about, you know, building accessibility, you know, are the doorknobs easy to use? Is there a ramp? Is there the ability for someone who’s disabled to be able to use the facility? Disaster preparedness, we talked about it a little bit more. Transportation, I’m the alternate to Tam. I’ll be hopefully on the commissioner going forward there. Tam knows it does a lot of work in that area. And recreation, we already do quite a bit of interesting recreation programming for seniors and would love to see more of that continue. Thank you.
So as the Chair of the Planning Commission, we’ve already done a lot of work for housing issues. Those are really important, because not only do we have a third of our homes occupied by seniors, but a third of those homes are also occupied by one person. And so finding ways for them to create additional income as well as combat loneliness is really important. We’re partnering with, for example, Home Match to provide partners for them to move in with or to have as a tenant, which is a low-risk way for them to have somebody in their home and to provide companionship as well as income. The Marin Housing Authority to provide funding for that, so that they can do the conversions to their homes, so I think these are really important. But again, I think about my parents, you know, my ninety-five-year-old parents, and their life has increasingly evolved around a senior center. It’s a dedicated senior center. It’s not a community center, it’s a senior center, and it’s really been important for them. They can go there, they can get an inexpensive meal, they can sit with other seniors, right? There aren’t little people running around, younger people running around, they’re with their peers. There’s a library there, there are events that they can do there. You know, maintaining good mental health is really important as you get older, and the problem is you become isolated in your home, and you need to be able to get out. And the senior center provides that place to go to, where they can be stimulated by others, they can play games, and they can participate with people, and they can be with friends in a way which is really productive for them, really happy for them. And I think that has to be part of our planning in Mill Valley, particularly as we become just so increasingly old. Thank you.
I think that an age-friendly plan is critical to looking to the future. I think it should incorporate transit. It’s been alluded to that, you know, we have neighboring jurisdictions such as Sausalito and Tiburon and Corder Madera, and so ensuring that we’re integrating our age-friendly plans in with theirs, I think is really critical to ensuring that seniors can go not just within the town that they live in, but can also access resources and opportunities that are in our neighboring jurisdictions. It should touch on housing and the need for senior housing. It should touch on programming, arts programming through our Arts Commission, library programming through the library, as well as recreation planning. The Mill Valley Senior Center at the community center is an amazing, has been an amazing resource for many years. It was frequented by my grandmother, who had rave reviews about it throughout the end of her life. And so I think supporting the institutions that we have, whether it be the recreation center or the library, and ensuring that it’s accessible and equitable to all is really important.
Thank you. This will be our fourth question, and Sina, we’re going to start with you. What would you support doing to build social cohesion so older residents are not isolated?
So kind of piggybacking on the last question a little bit, I think transportation is obviously a huge element, and it’s not something that can be just isolated to Ross. We have to cooperate with our neighbors as well. I think the availability and affordability of it is really key. You know, the idea of maybe working on carpools and also working with things like Whistlestop to get people into those areas is really an important element. Also bringing it closer within our town-sponsored events to try to get more opportunities for them not to have to always get in a vehicle to get there to be able to do it. I think the connectedness is just such a huge component of it. The isolation can have such a huge component of it, but I think, you know, you can kind of parlay the two of these together, you know, access to information to learn about age and gracefully with, you know, the proper food and nutrition, you know, turning it into opportunities to learn about how to financially prepare and budget for growing old, and Marin is a key element of all this as well, and creating greater awareness to, you know, all the available resources that are right underneath their noses that maybe they just aren’t aware of. So again, I think it’s a cohesive effort that Ross has to work carefully with their neighboring cities as well.
I think a large part of the way of getting at this problem is education, or at least communication to the community, to make the elderly people, as well as the younger people, to understand that this is a problem that exists in this community, and despite the gates, we’ve got to be, as members of the community, striking out to try and get to develop more cohesion with our neighbors, in addition to sponsoring these couple of major events that I mentioned, and trying to see what Ross Rec can do to develop things. I think we’ve got to teach, one of the things that I think people need to be taught and aren’t well-taught now is the transportation facilities that are available around the county. Now, the Ross Council can’t put you on a bus or can’t pay for a bus or something, but Whistlestop and MTA and TAM do have all sorts of programs to help people get to the dentist, to help people get to events, and I think that we should, as a community, continue to emphasize making sure our seniors can use that kind of program.
One effort that we’ve made is with our park facilities, is to make sure that there are park facilities that are available just for seniors to use, just for leisure, if you just want to take a walk. And there’s a tension with, well, we need more playing fields and we need more facilities for, you know, for dog parks, and there’s a tension there, but we have made a strong effort to make sure that there are still park facilities that are available for seniors to use. The library- The library also is a significant source for senior programming. I mentioned the NRGs, a connected community, is a resilient community, and I think Bill also mentioned that once you have an organized neighborhood, it has a lot of other network effects, and social, combating social isolation is a big part of that. Our neighborhood associations, I've been part of our neighborhood associations leaders group that meets a couple of times a year since I was our homeowner association president, and the membership has really diminished because the neighborhood associations are kind of dwindling, and that's one of the things that I would like our NRGs to help revitalize. In addition, I've been our liaison to the school district, and Mill Valley Middle School already has a really good connection with the Redwoods, and they do a lot of programming together. And Mill Valley Recreation has also really worked to create multi-generational recreation program, which I think is a really important piece in combating social isolation.
So isolation is probably the biggest issue that is faced by elderly people because they are down to a couple, if they're lucky, and in many cases, they're down to just themselves. And so they get up in the morning, and after taking care of themselves, they essentially have an entire day to fill. And keeping that mental fitness is so important. This is, our library in Mill Valley is really very helpful in this respect. We did a total of 1,400 programs last year. Obviously, not all of these were for seniors, but a good number of them were for seniors. They also provide book groups for seniors, which is a great way for them to engage. But again, I think about a place where seniors can go and really engage and have games, and they can meet for meals, and they can engage in lectures, and they can watch film together, and they can be with their peers. Because the reality is, and I've seen it with my parents and their group, the reality is, is that people move away, and so the friends that you had throughout your life are no longer there. They've gone someplace else, and that's a problem in Marin because it's expensive to stay here. And the reality is also that your friends die, and then you don't have that group anymore. And you are left with a small number of people to hang out with. And so making new friendships is really important for this group. And a place that's dedicated for seniors to go to really make all those connections and to spend a day and to have a productive day and a fulfilling day is the most important thing we can do for mental health. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's critical that we provide the opportunities for people to meet new people and also connect with old friends. You know, Sashi talked a little bit about this, but the reality is, is a lot of the civic organizations that have been around for 100-plus years are seeing diminishing membership, right? So if you think about the Rotary Clubs and the Lions Clubs and the Elks Clubs and the Masonic Clubs and the, you know, the institutions that people would be involved in in their entire lives are seeing diminished membership as we, as we kind of grow into more of a tech-based culture and more of a, you know, kind of one-off, oh, I'm going to go to this event, but I'm not necessarily going to pay a membership due and get the newsletter and get involved in that way. So having those one-off events and having those institutions that the city controls really do outreach and bring people in from the community is more critical than ever. And I think that we really have a great baseline from which to build. The Community Center with its, with the Mill Valley Senior Center within it, the Redwoods and all of the programming that it does, which includes programming for people not even at the Redwoods who attend Mill Valley Seniors for Peace and other groups there, the library, all of the events that the Arts Commission puts on, as well as civic organizations such as the Rotary that still exist today and still put on excellent programming and get people involved. So I think we can encourage people, we can do outreach, and we can liaison to other communities to bring people in.
Ross is a small town in a relatively small area. We do not have a senior center or facilities that are readily available for certain kinds of activities. That said, I think there are things that we could do. One of them, I'll give Elizabeth Brekka's credit for, she couldn't be here today, but this was her suggestion, that once a month, the town have a dinner for seniors at one of our local restaurants, I mean, a lunch, a regular gathering that you could count on at least once a month. As we were talking, I thought of my mother-in-law, who, whose husband had died many years previously, living alone. Of course, she had her family, or my wife, to support her and our children, but that was about it. She had one thing she just loved to do, and that was lawn bowling. She looked forward to that. And if lawn bowling was going on, you could count on it. She put on her white outfit and get out there and do lawn bowling. And she was quite a bit older, so this, she wasn't going to do a triathlon, but she could do lawn bowling. And I don't know where we would do that in Ross, croquet perhaps, on the Ross Common? I mean, I think if we thought about it, we could find some things that were entertaining and social for seniors to do. I agree with what Beech said about education as well. I teach a class currently at Stanford, and I was thinking perhaps some modification of that type of class, if we could find a place in Ross to present it, might just be interesting for seniors.
Thank you. So this fifth question, we're going to start with Beech. Now, some of you have touched on the topic that we have here, so this is an opportunity for you to take a deeper dive. How would you encourage more accessory dwelling units and home shares in your city or town?
Well, I think the state is going to help us do that. There is a lot of legislation being proposed and some which has already been passed relating to things that towns can't do to make it difficult to have ADUs. I think we all wince when we hear there's another one because our first reaction is they're taking our control away, and to an extent, that is true. But I think one of the things we can do is to kind of try and change our attitude. The state is not necessarily doing something bad, they're providing us some guidelines so that we don't have to be as concerned with technical issues with regard to planning for an ADU. And I guess I'll just stop by saying, I think it's an obvious thing. We are seeing a lot of them in Ross because one of the factors is that you get 500 extra feet of FAR if you put in an ADU, and a lot of people are taking advantage of that to construct ADUs. Thank you.
We also give a 500-square-foot floor ratio bonus for ADUs, and it has encouraged a lot of ADUs being built in Mill Valley. I think that we need to move to thinking about more of what's called lifecycle housing. I have two young children, this is the most home I'm ever going to need in my life. And there are a lot of people in town that are single, living alone in a big house. So, but there are also people whose, you know, young families are moving, their children and their families are moving back into the house. So I think we're going to see more of that type of situation, more, more home sharing. And what we, what we need to do is reexamine all of our practices and guidelines and make sure that we're not restricting that. I think the Planning Commission has done an excellent job of that, and as Beech mentioned, there is a lot coming down from the state, and it's very confusing at the moment what the state is going to actually come down with. So we'll have to wait and see how that all shakes out. But I think that if we can change our mindset around that, that's also going to change how we think about parking and how we think about density in the way that I think people in Marin have maybe not thought about before.
Yeah, so accessory dwelling units are something that we've been really successful at doing in Mill Valley. We did probably 20, permitted 20 new units last year, which may not sound like a lot, but, you know, Pickleweed, for example, is an affordable housing development that we've got in Mill Valley, and that's only 30 units, and that was built 34 years ago. So doing 20 in one year is very productive. Over the next 10 years, we probably do 200 of these. So, and we provided a density bonus, as everybody might be aware. The city, or the state is now handing out an even bigger density bonus, so our measly 500-square-foot is now being overwhelmed by the state's very generous 800-square-foot. So if 500 wasn't enough, 800 probably is enough. So I think there's a lot of incentives now to do this. So homeowners are going to be able to be able to put in not just an accessory dwelling unit, but also a junior accessory dwelling unit on one property. So every single-family residence in Mill Valley has the potential to become a triplex. So there's a lot of incentives there, but there are a couple of other things that we're working on as well. One is providing set plans for accessory dwelling units, so they are already designed. You basically choose your design, right? And it can be skinned any way you want, but basically, it's already laid out for you. And these are pre-approved design plans. So it provides an easy way for you basically plug and play an accessory dwelling unit on your property. And secondly, providing financing options for people, right? Because it's one thing to say, I'm going to do an accessory dwelling unit, but it's expensive right now, especially to build. So people need financing options, and if they have those things, then they're set to go. Thanks.
Yeah, so professionally, I actually own a accessory dwelling unit business called House Plus, and over the last little bit more than a year, we've been researching the codes in every jurisdiction in the Bay Area and beyond. And it's been fascinating to see what the state has done. Essentially, since 2015, starting with Governor Brown and continuing with Governor Newsom, a whole series of legislation has not only legalized ADUs that in many jurisdictions had been just not allowed previous, but incentivized them with permit reductions, with parking reductions, with reductions in terms of what was required in terms of the height and in terms of the setbacks. And so, you know, as we move forward, I think we need to look beyond ADUs now that the state's kind of taken the driving seat, and we need to look at, you know, how can we facilitate home sharing? How can we facilitate the construction of JDUs, Junior Accessory Dwelling Units, where you might have a wet bar, you know, small little kitchenette inside an existing home? I think that those more creative solutions, in addition to the detached and attached ADUs, will provide a lot more creative housing where people can then, as Urban said, kind of plug and play for what works best for them and their family, whether it's one person living in a large house, or whether it's a family looking to rent to one or two people who need housing in our community.
I think ADUs in general are a good thing. They are the successor to what used to be called the granny flat, so you can see the connection to seniors and particularly family members who you may want to have live with you, but do not presently have the ability to do that and give them some privacy and raise your children or whatever. That said, it's, it's, it's a kind of a mixed blessing. For one thing, the law makes it easier to build these units, but what we really have to see is, are they being used the way they were intended to be used? Are they going to be rented out? Will they be used for extended family? That's an open question. Secondly, there are some areas, like the area I live in, on steep hillsides, there are pretty good reasons from an engineering standpoint where you do not want excessive FAR sometimes. It destabilizes the hill, which gets us back into disaster preparedness. But seriously, overall, I think it's a good thing, and hopefully, it will, over time, be a partial solution, at least, I think, to some of the housing issues seniors face.
I won't beat the ADU horse dead anymore, but there is a big issue in Ross, which is we're going to have a state mandate forcing us to have more affordable housing for our teachers, firefighters, police, and town employees. This is a huge opportunity for us. I think we can turn to places like Marin Housing Authority and also private financing options to make them possible. Someone on the panel, I think, said many of our older adults are house-rich and cash-poor. I think, you know, this idea of living in homes that are too big for them is posing another big issue. And I think what we can do as a town is provide design services to help them make their homes more accessible and give them kind of access to the services that they need to be able to live comfortably. One of the ideas that I had was actually to have city-vetted lists of vendors that are capable of working with older adults, and that's a quick fix that we can throw out there. Another issue that I think is also not being mentioned here is just the accessibility of rentals for the aging population as well. And I know we've got things like Measure W, which is going to soon funnel some money into subsidizing the rental costs for aging adults, but also looking at co-living opportunities and other creative solutions that we can get across the finish line quickly, especially in Ross where, you know, there are a large portion of our population that still do need affordable homes, and they don't own them.
Thank you. We haven't gotten any questions from the audience. Does anybody have a question? Okay, Jody. Thank you. Okay. So, and this is probably going to be our last question because we are going to run out of time with your closing statements. So this is from our audience. What are your thoughts on ageism? What is it, and how do we address it?
Ageism, that's an interesting, that's an interesting question. So dealing with ageism in our community, I think there would be subtle things, like I mentioned about being able to, accessibility into a building, making sure that their, seniors are serving on boards and commissions, making sure that there are opportunities for them to use the parks. I think that as a community, Mill Valley, I think, is a relatively age-friendly community. I don't think that we have a problem with, with ageism, but it is definitely something to keep an eye out for. I think because we have such a vocal and active community, and so many of those vocal and active people are seniors, I think they keep us in line and make sure that we're, you know, that we're giving them the opportunities that they need within the city.
Yeah, so ageism is about discrimination. It's about discriminating against people that are elderly. So it's how elderly people are perceived and how they're treated in the community. And ageism is also about how we perceive ourselves. So it's about dignity, and it's about your own self-respect, and it's how you feel about yourself. And one of the things I've seen in my parents is that they become increasingly defeated as they get older because their body breaks down and their mental capabilities break down. They can't remember things that they used to be able to remember. They can't do the activities that they used to do. You have bodily functions that start to fail, and that has a huge impact on your dignity. And it has a huge impact on your ability to interact with the community because when these things happen, you become homebound. You can no longer leave, you can no longer be away from a care facility, you can no longer be away from, you know, restrooms and so forth. These are the realities of getting older, and it's a big problem for people as they get older, to be, you know, a well-integrated part of their community, to keep themselves mentally fit and happy, and to be an integrated part of their community. And I think, you know, providing services that help them in this situation is really important, and there are not a lot of easy solutions to this. I can tell you from experience, it's hard. But providing volunteer activities is obviously fantastic, and obviously, providing accessibility is really important. Thank you.
Yeah. Ageism, in my mind, does touch on discrimination, and it also touches on structural barriers, structural barriers to entry, to access programs, to access city facilities such as a park or the library. And also in the private sector, can someone of all ages access a business, right? And there's ageism at the older end of the spectrum, and there's ageism at the younger end of the spectrum. And I think that we have to be conscious of how we plan our community, both in the built environment as well as programming at the city level, and how our decisions as a council and as a city impact people of all ages, whether that be someone with a young child in a stroller, how can they access this building? Can the stroller get over the curb? Are there routes, you know, are there barriers in their path to get different places? And people at the older end of the spectrum who might be walking with a cane or a wheelchair. So I think that as a city, it's something that is on the top of mind to many. As Sashi said, we have very active participants in the older end of the spectrum of the community who participate in our civic life, but it's something that we have to be conscious of and constantly reevaluate.
Yes, I think ageism, I agree with what's been said. It's a kind of stereotyping, but in a negative way, that if you're older, then you can't do this, or you shouldn't do that. And it's kind of a self-reinforcing paradigm, actually, because seniors absorb this, too, and they think, oh, well, then I shouldn't, or it's too dangerous to go do a swim meet or a triathlon or something like that. And then the public thinks, well, see, I told you so. And so how do we break that cycle? I think one way we do it is exactly by the thing we're doing here right now, talking about. about it, thinking about it, sensitizing each other and the community to these things. I mean, it's a big job, but we have actually made progress doing that with regard to things like racism and sexism, the other isms, that again involve negatives, stereotyping. The other thing is, I do think part of breaking this cycle is encouraging people to do things they wouldn't otherwise consider doing. And let's get things moving in the other direction. Let's get people to maybe take a risk or step out of their comfort zone. That can be another self-reinforcing cycle on the virtuous side. So I would hope we could do more of that as well.
Yeah, I think in Ross, we're well-positioned to tackle this issue because we're a small community. So we have the ability to create a community that actually recognizes aging and encourages helpfulness. One thing that just came to mind, maybe a story because there's so many things that have already been said. My grandmother, when she was just getting towards the end of being able to drive, had to get a handicap pass that she put on her windshield. And she had a lot of shame with putting the handicap sign on because she needed to walk with her cane. And it wasn't because she was handicapped, it's because she just needed to be closer to where she needed to get out and walk. And a very simple fix to this is actually just having senior spots inside town where they don't say handicap, but they say senior spot. It's these little stigmatisms. And I think it's all about building this sense of independence and confidence and not feel like you're slowly on the kind of the back nine of your life, but that you're living good years, and that your contributor, opening up opportunities, fostering kind of the respect of the community when they show up. In my culture, we give our elders a lot of respect, and these are things that we just have to foster. And in a place like Ross with only 757 households, these are things we can do.
As to a definition of ageism, I think it's that it's an unintentional disregard of aged people and the problems that they begin to develop that just aren't their fault, they just happen. And I think a starting point for trying to overcome that disregard is education. People reach a point where, as Bill has mentioned, they just can't do certain physical activities they used to do. So part of what they need is help in finding something else to substitute where they're for them when their mental and physical capabilities diminish. And I think that's a very important thing, and I think a town such as Ross, partly because we're small, we're a little closer together, maybe, that we really can do things. And I think we tend to overlook those things. We think about, "Does a road need fixed? Do we need more lights?" And we aren't thinking about, "Well, wait a second. Let's not talk about just spending bucks on keeping our infrastructure going. We've also got to think about what's happening to the people in our community who are becoming older and less able to do things."
Thank you. And that concludes the question portion of the forum. Before the candidates make their closing statements, here's some useful information about the election. March 3 is Election Day. Vote-by-mail ballots were mailed this past Monday, February 3. Returned ballots must be postmarked no later than March 3 and received at the election office no later than March 6. Please note that Marin County pays the postage for all returned ballots. If you want a vote-by-mail ballot, you must request one by February 25. Early voting is now open at the election office at the Civic Center. You can vote there in person, Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at Room 121. Look for the League's Easy Voter Guide on the table in the back, or on the, yeah, actually at the entrance, and you can also find it on our website at www.marinlwv.org. And now the candidates will make closing statements of two minutes each. We will go in reverse order of the opening statements, starting with Beech.
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters and Whistle Stop for sponsoring this gathering for us. I think the thing that I've been, as I think over what I've been saying, I think the main theme that I'm getting at is we have to think about seniors. It's very easy to just lead our own lives without thinking about what seniors need in terms of help from the rest of the community. But next, after we think about it, we got to take some action about it. And one of the problems, I believe, is that there is a tendency, even on the council, knowing that this is an issue, to overlook it in the day-to-day functioning of the town. And I think we got to do something about that. And I, to my mind, once we start taking action, once people start thinking about the problems of the aged, it's something that's going to build. It's not going to stop. Once you got one program, people are going to think about, maybe there's two other things we can do. I believe it's something we can build on. I think very quickly, there are three major things that a member of a council needs to serve effectively, to serve everyone, including the ages. One of them is fairness or consistency in decisions that are being made. The second is transparency. People have got to know, the people of the community have got to know why you're voting the way you are so that they can anticipate what's going to happen in the future. And the third is, I think it takes courage. There are times when members of a council are going to find that there are a lot of people who don't agree with the position they want to take. If they think it's the right position, after studying it carefully, they've got to take it. That's the best way for the community. Thank you very much.
Again, thank you for hosting us. It's wonderful to get these issues out there. I think it's really encouraging to see that we have a 23-member group focused on these issues, that we have a five-year plan, and then that there's going to be a lot of collaboration because I think a solution here is not going to be one that's going to be confined to a small town like Ross, but it's going to be a county-wide type of initiative. I think when I think about this as a whole, it's all about creating aging equity. It's like cultivating a county-wide, age-friendly environment, especially for all those that are in need. And I said it in my opening statement, we built this county on the shoulders of those who came before us. We need to continue to recognize their efforts and make it easy for them to age gracefully. And there's very tactical, really kind of tactical, small things we can do that I'm encouraged to do on Town Council because I think, you know, historically, Town Council comes up with a lot of big plans and no execution. And, you know, as an entrepreneur and someone who's run several successful businesses and has built product, like software product, I'm always obsessed with my customer, and I want to kind of deliver results quickly. And I think there's a lot of really short and easy wins that we can get within the next few years, especially while we're starting to plan as a community to make things work. And there's a lot of challenges. And I think we are well-positioned with more initiatives that are going to come out that are going to create the funding, and a lot of really kind of creative solutions, and I'm out there to seek them and also socialize them and bring them to the table.
After I graduated from law school, my first job out of law school was working for a state senator who represented San Mateo County, a county not unlike Marin County, with lots of similar issues and needs. When I did that for three years, and then I became a consultant to the California State Senate Committee on Health and Welfare. And in that position, analyzed all the bills, along with another consultant that came before that committee. So you can imagine health and welfare. And a lot of these issues are issues that seniors have. But I was thinking about that. As valuable as that experience was, and it is valuable, I think, to know what's available and to understand the legal process and so forth, we're all running for office at the local level, and that's a really important level for seniors. The state can provide money. The federal government, of course, is a source of money because of their tax authority. But it's really the local communities that can make this real for people. And it can also do things that, in the nature of what we're talking about today, help people. I mean, seniors need help. They need help in an emergency. They need help with a lot of things. We can do that at the local level. They need engagement because they tend to become disengaged. Again, we can do that as well. Some of this is something that government can do itself. Some of it is more volunteerism, but government can always help with volunteerism and can support that. And I think we've had a lot of good ideas here today. I know I've learned quite a bit just by being here. I want to thank the League and the initiative for organizing this. I think it's really valuable, and I hope to see a lot more of it in the future. Thank you.
Yes, thank you to Whistle Stop and the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. You know, I'm running for city council on an issues-focused campaign, focused on environmental preservation and preserving what we love about Mill Valley, focused on emergency preparedness and how we help people get to safety and ensuring that our fire department is up to standard in terms of equipment and in terms of staffing levels. I'm running on helping our economy, helping our local economy with our neighborhood-serving businesses, resident-serving businesses that serve the people of our town. I think that all of these issues, as well as some of the issues we've talked about today, including housing and infrastructure, touch the lives of seniors in our community. And I think that as we, as candidates, go forward in this campaign in the remaining less than four weeks until the election day, you know, we have to open up our ears and hear what's happening in people's neighborhoods. Some of the neighborhoods in Mill Valley just have unsafe driving conditions. We need to look at traffic calming measures. We need to look at infrastructure repairs in our parks and in our sidewalks and in our streets to make our community a community that people can get around by foot, they can get around by wheelchair, they can get around by bike, and that they can get around by vehicle in a safe manner, and so that people can take advantage of all of the wonderful programming that we have at the library, at the Arts Commission, and in our community center. I'd be honored to have your vote for all of the residents listening today. And I'm proud to be endorsed by Congressman Huffman, by our firefighters and our police, by the Sierra Club, by Mill Valley Community Action Network, and by so many local community leaders, including seniors in our community. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you again to the League for putting this on and for Whistle Stop for hosting this event. This has been really interesting. I've been to a lot of events in the last couple of weeks as we're getting ready for this election. I don't even know how many I've been to, but this has been the first one where we've really discussed senior issues. And I, it's been interesting for me to learn in preparation for this, and also to listen to my fellow candidates talk about the issues that are present here. And these are things, as I said, that are very close to home for me in my own personal situation with my wife and my family, and as somebody who's getting older and approaching retirement. So there are going to be implications for Mill Valley increasingly in the future, and it's going to require action in our own town, and action that's going to be centered on housing and on mobility and on infrastructure and on communication. And these are things which I've been involved in quite a bit over the last 20 years in Mill Valley. I'm the chair of the Planning Commission, so we deal with housing. So I feel like I'm well-prepared to deal with the housing issues that are present for seniors. It's going to deal with funding because we need to form new, find new forms of funding for all of these initiatives. We are unfortunately in a pretty tight financial situation in Mill Valley as a result of a lot of different things, including pensions and fire risk and flood mitigation. And we're going to need to find sources of funding that are non-traditional. And the Library Foundation, which I helped set up in Mill Valley, is the most successful 501(c)(501) that we've established in the last decade in our town. And it's providing a new source of revenue that we didn't have before. And finding these kinds of solutions are the kinds of things that we're going to need to do in Mill Valley to deal with aging. And that's an important topic, and I'm looking forward to dealing with it. Thank you very much for your time.
Well, I thought of a couple of things that we didn't come up during the forum that I think are important to talk about. One is, one of the ways that seniors often interact with the city is through police and fire. And they're the ones who attend to medical calls, lift assists, and often just calls for resources. You know, "I'm not sure how to do this. I'm not sure who to speak to about that." And our police and fire department is extremely well-trained in being able to be supportive and thinking ahead on, when they come to a senior's home for a lift assist, they have a checklist of things that they do in order to try to mitigate that for the future. So that's one thing I wanted to bring up. Additionally, the public safety power shut-offs have been a really good drill for a bigger disaster, and it's something that affects seniors, particularly those who need power for medical equipment. So that is an important, it's an important consideration in our emergency planning. So I'm currently the vice mayor. I've been on the council for four years. We are going through a leadership transition right now. We're hiring a new city manager. Two of our strong female council members, Stephanie Milton-Peters and Jessica Jackson, are cycling off. And in two years, John and Jim will cycle off as well. So we're going to need some experience in this transition with new leadership on the council and new leadership in city government. So I am running in order to provide that continuity, provide that experience and knowledge of the community, and hoping to be able to do, continue that work for the next four years. Thank you.
That concludes our forum. Thank you to Community Media Center of Marin for recording this event. It will be rebroadcast on Channel 30 and posted on YouTube. The YouTube link will be available at the League's website, along with broadcast days and times. I also want to put out a really special thank you to the Aging Action Initiative. Coming up with this idea of doing a forum that is topic-based is the first time we've done this, and I think it's great. I've got chills just thinking about what I've learned today. So I might do this again with other topics. So thank you so much to everybody at the Aging Action Initiative. And certainly thank you to the candidates for participating, Lynn Dooley for timekeeping. Lisa Bennett and Wanda Sarti were here to help sort questions. Didn't have to do that, but thanks for keeping me company. And to you for joining us this afternoon, and most importantly, for voting. And now a final note from Michelle Javid and Teri Dowling.
Good afternoon, Michelle Javid. I'm one of the co-chairs for the Aging Action Initiative, and my partner here...
...is Teri Dowling, and I'm also a co-chair.
We're a good team.
We're a very good team. And we just, again, yeah, I want to reiterate the thanks to all of the candidates and Whistle Stop for hosting, Sammy, who is one of the assistants with Aging Action Initiative for organizing this.
Sammy, would you stand up, please?
Yes.
This would not have happened without all of your hard work.
Exactly.
And Linda Jackson, who is the...
Program Director.
Exactly. Of Aging...
Thank you. And please also look out for our article in the Marin Voice titled, "It Doesn't Have To Be This Way." Thank you.
I would really like us to give a big hand to this wonderful panel. I've learned a lot, and I live in the town of Ross, and I'm very grateful for your being here and for Mill Valley. Really, it was very inspiring. So thank you so much for being here today.